I don't know how long that'll be, so Jim, I'm gonna take the minutes. So he'll be acting secretary for this evening. Now it's time to take public comment on non-digital items. Does anyone have comments? We're in.
I was wondering what the status is. Back two meetings ago, we talked about looking into websites and making them more user-friendly. So I hope you don't mind, but I'm gonna just keep bugging on this and find out where do we stand on that. Has there been any discussion?
Yeah, actually, I had a meeting with Tammy today about how to look into different websites around. And so she's gonna contact our website design guy. And we're gonna get some rough ideas, and then we'll give you a call so you can look at it with me and maybe give me some pointers, if that'd be all right. I don't know when that'll be, but...
Do I have to worry about that?
No.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have another question, if you don't mind, again, a follow-up from two meetings ago. During the auditor's meeting, they took a vote and said that they would like to have the notes to the auditor's report, you know, in detail. And I was wondering if there's a decision on that or what the process would be to make that decision.
To my opinion, that's what they wanted, so that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna provide it with them.
Great.
Is that right? We need an action of the board to do that, or...
I'm not sure what they're asking.
They asked for notes of the audit. That's, I know that's what they asked for.
They asked for a complete set of notes, yeah.
Notes of the, you mean of the audit done by the...
By Barbara Team Thornton.
Yeah, auditor's notes and footnotes.
I don't believe, we don't get them. So I don't know if there is even a process for getting them.
As I recall, the meeting, what was mentioned was Maria Holness asked for footnotes. Is that your understanding, Jim?
The auditor's footnotes and notes that they have to do, I mean, they do them to prepare their report. So it's a matter of just making them prominent if they are added to what we've been missing.
Is that something you want, Jim?
The answer to that is I don't know. I'm trying to schedule a meeting with our head auditor about other issues, but I'll add that to the list, and I'll get back to you.
If they are available, make sure that the...
Thank you.
Uh, Kate?
They usually come with a price tag.
Was that right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So maybe in that discussion, we find out what the price is.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that might be a consideration.
And just, you know, to piggyback on that, if you don't mind, that would be good money to spend.
Okay.
You know, in the township, there are certainly, if we need to cut costs, there should be other areas that we could do that, but auditor's notes and things like that, that's really where we should be spending some money.
Okay. Okay, other comments? Brian, do you have any comments?
Joe?
Okay. Okay. Oh, Harry.
I've seen some snowdrops about to bloom. I thought everybody should know.
Well, thank you. Suzanne, roll.
Well, on that note, I can say that our first bush for aconite has bloomed, and that's the first flower that we get in the spring, so there you go.
Good. Good. I guess there is something.
There is.
Okay. I need to consider a motion to approve the minutes of the February 10th meeting. I'll make the motion, and we approve the minutes of February 10th as presented. Second, any comment? All of the favor.
Aye.
Uh, Jim, manager's report and president's report.
Okay. With respect to the manager's report, um... In terms of this year's audit, the field work has been completed, and the auditors are preparing the draft report. The township has submitted claims to its insurers for damage done by the recent storms. It has also been tracking expenditures and submitting information to Chester County. We do not yet know whether or not the expenses in the aggregate of Chester County and the state will be sufficient so that there will be money available for reimbursement of expenditures.
Jim, on that, if you, if the county doesn't threshold, would the township be reimbursed whole for its portion, or...
Usually, it's eighty percent. There's still twenty percent, which is on the municipality. And I'm just going by what happened with Hurricane Irene. And there was another snow event in 2010, where we had the two snowstorms, about twenty snowstorms with less than a week apart. Those were emergency situations, and money was made available through PIMA, which is the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Association, and that was eighty percent of the cost.
And what did you submit for our cost of that storm? Approximately?
Oh, I don't know the number. Tammy might know the number. I don't know the number, and that's a number that's still in process because we just got requests for certain information today from the county. In terms of meeting, the regional planning group meets this Wednesday night at School for Township Building at seven thirty. The Trash Task Force will hold its monthly meeting this Thursday at seven o'clock. The Board of Supervisors would normally hold an executive session on Monday, March 3rd, at seven thirty. That's non-public meeting. The Sustainability Committee will hold a workshop to prepare for the Sustainability Fair. That workshop is on Tuesday, March 4th, at seven thirty PM. The EAC will hold its monthly meeting on Wednesday, March 5th, at five thirty PM. Park and Recreation will hold its monthly meeting the same day at seven thirty PM. And the next Board of Supervisors meeting is March 10th at seven thirty PM. I'm sorry. In terms of the trade report, this is for the month ended January 31st, 2014. Revenues, earned income taxes, sixty-five thousand, thirty-four dollars and twenty-one cents. Real estate taxes, nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifteen cents. Transfer taxes is thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-four cents. Open space taxes of thirty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. Other, excuse me, one hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents, for a total revenue of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-two cents. Bills paid, bills listed of 113 was one oh eight, nine thirty-eight, fifty-two. The bills listed of 123 was fifty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents, for a total of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-five cents. There were three payrolls, the total was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy cents. No payments were made on debt. The general fund balances, as of the end of that month, were one million, six hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-four cents. Open space tax receipts were one million, three hundred and forty-one thousand, seventy-nine dollars and seventy-two cents. Liquid fuel funds of sixty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. The 2012 lawn proceeds, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-five cents.
Okay, the road management's report is next. This is for January. Conducted ongoing maintenance or repair of township equipment. Replaced road signs and traffic control signs in various locations. Worked with contractors, removing and trimming trees on several roads in the township, graded various roads. Pulled in potholes on various roads, sowed and plowed snow. Assisted the contractor installing heat and maintenance building and worked with the contractor repairing Jane Lane. Mike, please report.
Okay, during the month of January, the West Vincent Township Police Department responded to one hundred and ninety-one calls for service, including the filing, the arrest of a twenty-six-year-old male from Upper Darby for leaving the scene of an accident after his vehicle collided with another vehicle on Flowing Springs and St. Matthews Road. And lastly, the arrest of a thirty-nine-year-old male from West Grove for possession of a controlled substance and drug paraphernalia after officers initiated a traffic stop along Pottstown Pike for an expired registration on the vehicle. Thank you.
Okay, after the subdivision list is next, we have a request for the Markle family to give us an extension on their subdivision application for their property on Bertrand Road. They have granted us an extension until April 30th, 30th of 2014. Signed by Frank Markle. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
Any comment? All of the favor.
Aye.
Bills list is next. Township General Fund bills listed for February 24th is one hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-two cents. The reimbursable bills list is thirty-eight hundred and six dollars and ninety-nine cents. And the subdivision Utility Plan bills list is seventeen hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents, for a total of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and ninety cents. The ratified bills list is, the invoice is deeply ratified, and the ratified bills list is fifty-three thousand, six sixty-seven and eighty-six cents. So here, motion to approve.
So move. Second, we're doing it on all of them collectively, okay?
Yeah, yeah. Any comments? Bills list. Mike, favor.
There's a cost here of fifty thousand dollars. Is that a health savings account?
Yes.
And that's the employers contributing to the health savings account, not the employees?
That's correct.
Is that something we do every year?
That is something we've done every year for the past three or four years, yes.
And it's always the same amount?
No.
What was the last year?
Uh, last year was around forty thousand.
And did it go up because of additional employees? Is it X amount per employee?
Uh, it went up because of change in status and change in deductibles.
So you're increasing the amount that you're putting into the health savings account to make up for the higher deductible?
Yes.
Does it, Maria, you have a question?
Yeah, I guess I'm kind of floored by this, too. How many employees does this include?
Uh, sixteen.
And, or is that, does that include, let me ask it this way, is that every employee in the township?
That is every employee that's covered by a medical plan, yes.
By a medical plan, so that's union employees, non-union employees?
Police, yes.
Everybody.
Yes, that's correct.
Has there been a decision made on the contribution from employees yet for healthcare?
No.
No?
No.
No.
When do we anticipate that?
When we decide.
If I get away, you'll put it in for like that.
Harry, is that room available?
It's still there.
Just, Mike, I didn't mean to cut you off. Do you have any other questions, or...
No.
Okay. Okay, Frances, tell us.
Hold on, Frances. I had the same question a few minutes ago, Mike, and the way it was explained to me, it doesn't, you know, I told Jim it's gonna have to take a little while to send it, but this is something that township was done, and it was put in place to reduce the overall health, let me know if I have to speak, Jim. The overall health care cost to these employees, the township's portion, by doing this, paying their deductible through these health, the reimbursement, it saved us money every year for the last four years, you said?
It's three or four years, yes.
Well, choosing a health savings account type of policy does set, it does lower the premiums, but usually the employee is contributing into the health savings account, not the employee.
That's a whole other question that needs to be addressed.
So let me just ask the question, do the employees pay any of their deductibles?
The employees are allowed to contribute into, and I don't know that I have the ability to answer that question.
Well, I get, if there's a two thousand dollar deductible per employee, just pull you a number out of the hat, is the township picking up that two thousand dollar deductible?
The town, no, township makes a contribution to the health savings account.
Which can be used to pay a deductible.
That's correct.
Right, so basically, if you take fifty thousand, divide by sixteen, you come up with something, twenty-five hundred dollars, whatever it is. And if the deductible's twenty-five or less, then it's paid in deductible. If it's greater than, then they're paying twenty-five hundred plus, and the employee would be eligible, right, responsible for the difference.
Wow.
Just on the family plan, what do you think the deductible is for the current plan?
I'd say five to six thousand.
Twelve thousand, six hundred dollars.
Oh, for the family?
Yeah.
Yeah, minus twenty, so, okay.
Minus twenty, why?
That's what my deductible is for family, but it's five thousand individual.
Okay, okay. So it's not a couple thousand dollar difference, it's a big, it's a big hole there, and it's proportionally the same for...
Starting this year, but the prior years, it was pretty much covering the deductible problem.
I think last year it's five thousand for families, anyway, so...
So just...
Oh, sorry, Maria.
I'm sorry, I didn't cut you off. The, I understand that it's a hardship, but it is a hardship that most citizens in this country today are facing enormous healthcare costs. And, you know, I have a very small business, and our healthcare costs are outrageous, and they're borne by our employees. So, like, we all understand that it's not just the township, and it's just that we're kind of getting it twice, and taxpayers kind of paying it twice, because we're paying it for ourselves, and then we're paying someone else's as well, so that's the sensitivity.
Okay, I understand that. I understand. I will say that I checked with Upper Euclid Township and Simpson Township, and the best information from there is that their employees do not contribute to their healthcare costs either. So we're not the only, we're not up out by ourselves.
But does the other townships contribute to their health savings account?
They don't have high deductible plans, there is no need for a health savings account.
Oh, so they have higher premiums, is what you're saying?
Right, right. Suzanne?
Does this health savings account, the carryover from year to year, if it's not used, does it come back to the township? How do you handle that?
It carries over from year to year. This is a health savings account. There are also, I forget what the name of the other one is, but there's another type of account which does not carry over from year to year. And if you don't spend it, the money comes back to the employer. That is not the situation.
So how much money is really in this health savings account?
I don't believe the township knows, because there, each, each individual has his or her own account, and there's money in that account. I don't believe the township has any knowledge as to what's in that account, because among other things, the employee can make their own contributions into that account, too.
Think of it as like a 401K which can dwell on for nine years.
Any questions? Francis?
Seven hundred gallons of propane, is that for one month for the garage?
No, that's the first time this winter, I think, that we had the paint filled with the garage.
So that's, that's filling it from scratch?
Well, since the last time we got it filled, I think it was last summer, wasn't it, earlier this summer?
I think so. I just believe the first time it's been filled this winter.
Okay, I just thought maybe that fills for propane for a month, and I'm thinking, wow, that's a substantial amount of money.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you.
Okay, Brian?
Look at the bills list here. The police got a desktop computer a while back, they got a laptop. Is there some reason why they got a desktop this time, or are we still buying computers in bits and pieces?
We are still buying computers in bits and pieces as needed, and this was to replace a computer that, the technical term is, I think, bit-dos. This is a computer that had problems and needed to be replaced.
Okay. I see a thing from Blue Fox Creative for a website maintenance update. Is this for the continued rebuild of the township website?
That's correct.
The rental of the wheel loader from Brock Tractor Equipment. Did we accomplish some type of time savings with that? I assume that was for salt loading.
Yeah, and we used it also for clearing roads, load snow and trees out of the way. And we used it when we started repairing Jane Lane before it's stolen again, load trucks.
And I'll just make a note on that, and it's sort of out of my place, but the loader did a tremendous job during the, after the ice storm. It removed lots of debris from the roads that the backhoe simply did not have the capability to move.
Okay. We've got a thousand dollar bill for various road signs and cones. It seems like a big number, or don't I understand how much road signs cost?
I don't know if you understand or not, but we replaced signs that were stolen in the various road closed events in the last three weeks.
Who was stealing the road closed signs?
Yeah.
Okay.
Happens all the time, it just happened a whole lot here in the last month. We also have a stock of Ford road signs in stock, because the Ford road signs are very popular, ones that are stolen in the distance. Yes, Frances?
I was watching a Penn dot, I was watching a Penn dot truck on St. Matthews Road, third during the road, and it did a very good job of taking down several signs.
Yeah.
But you know what, I'd rather have the signs taken down, the road open.
Yeah, well, I'm glad to hear that. I will quote you on that.
I need one from the state's new act, and still buying, pick some of those potholes.
Any other questions on the bills list?
Yes, I still have some more. The Moldy Moto study, it looks like it shows it being like for a two-week period, a two thousand dollar bill. Is that actually from work done over a longer period of time?
It is actually from work done over a longer period of time, yes.
Okay. We've got, we purchased, let's see, three times about five hundred gallons of diesel fuel. Do we track the usage of diesel fuel per vehicle?
Yes.
Do we do it the same way the police people do?
I don't know how the police do it. We do it our own way, because we don't have licensed vehicles, and we don't buy the fuel with a credit card. So we track through the total on the pump, you know, the, you know, runs on the pump.
So in other words, we do know approximately what the mileage is, or, you know, the miles per gallon of each vehicle over some period of time.
I have no idea the miles per gallon.
You just know how much fuel they, they consume?
Yes, over a given, in a given period of time.
But there's no mileage tracking in initially, just...
No, I think you find where plowing snow, you maybe get two or three miles in the gallon, the big trucks, maybe four on the small trucks. So a hundred gallons of fuel doesn't go very far when you push a heavy snow.
Okay. This one, and probably somebody else is gonna look at me cross-eyed on it, but I noticed that the Richard Brown bill came twelve thousand dollars, and I thought there was some requirement that if something comes over ten thousand dollars, you're supposed to have three phone bids on, on, do we get three phone bids on that?
No, except when you're under state of emergency. Except when you're under state of emergency. Except when the township is under state of emergency, we do not have to follow any big requirement.
Okay.
Like Frances said, you'd rather see the roads open than not, so...
The Masara mediation matters. What is Masara mediation matter?
This is a piece of litigation with Mr. and Mrs. Masara, and it's going to non-binding mediation, an attempt to resolve matter.
Can we go and say what the matter was or where they are?
It's public information, and the Masars live on Hollow Road, and they made allegations that by putting certain drainage in that, somehow that has created them damage and devalued the property.
Okay. Let's see, I noticed in Stevenson Equipment, and I think it's on the, and there's at least two of them there, we've got two bills for mower parts in the middle of winter.
Yeah.
We used the mower itselfing?
Yeah, we actually did. We mowed down a bunch of trees, branches that were laying along the road, that were stuck in the frost, were sticking out, so we just moved them back with the mower, rather than cut by hand.
Or just toss them in a truck or something like that?
They were frozen in the snow. You missed that part?
Okay.
You're welcome, there's still a bunch of them out there, go out and grab ahold of them, we'll pay twenty-five bucks an hour.
And, and the last, the last thing is, I noticed we've got, let's see, plow parts, tree removal, though I suspect a lot of the diesel was burned due to it, we've got plowing services in here. Do we have any idea what the impact on the budget for snow removal is for this winter compared to what we are expecting?
We're not finished totaling up the total. We think that we're gonna be probably right at our budget limit for the entire year of 2014.
So we're, should pray for no more snow?
None next year, none in the fall.
Just be ready. I'd rather be ready than pray, so...
Okay, that's it for me, thank you.
Okay. Kit, Brian?
Well, I was talking about the Masars, I was wondering, is it their responsibility to remove those large logs that are still on Hollow Road, or is it the township's?
It's ours, they're in the wires, I don't know if you noticed the wires there?
I didn't see the wires.
Yeah, yeah, believe me, I don't wanna get them out of there, but...
Yeah, so I was trying to figure out why they were still there.
Right, I'm just in the comments, have, everybody has service, so I'm sure they're busy elsewhere doing other more important things.
Well, they did come back, and they were starting to wind up a lot of the wire that was down and stuff, so...
Okay, but I guess they'll get to it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's why that's still there.
Yeah, okay, I was wondering.
Okay. Other questions on the bills list? Motion from David Second, all of the favor.
Aye.
All right, we have a request to use the parking gazebo from Matrice Young on June 22nd from nine to one for a fundraising walk. Tammy had explained this to me. Correct me, do you know about this, Jim?
Some, not much more than what she explained to you.
Okay. Ms. Young has a son who is, I'm not sure exactly, he's either handicapped or has a very serious illness, and she'd like to use the truck for fundraising walk at that time, in those hours. Does it conflict with any other use?
What we normally do.
Usually do it, but, you know, why not?
A motion. That's a motion, second.
Any comments? All of the favor?
Aye.
All right, we have a request to use the parking gazebo from the Delaware Valley Yorkshire Terrier Club for their spring match on May 18th. We did that last year, or they did that last year, we granted them permission, and it was a controversy-free event. Some of them aren't, so, that was... So if you'd consider a motion for that?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Comment? All of the favor?
Aye.
Bertrand Village is next. We have a letter from John Deaver, project manager for Wolfers Associates, dated February 12th. Dear Mr. Wendelgas, this letter is to withdraw the current landing and all that application. Bertrand Village LLC has on file for 2200 Flowing Springs Road. So if you have any questions or requirement, any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me. And we have a form of motion for the board to consider, and as I move with the township through Resolution Number Six of 2014, to memorialize and ratify the purchase of the property at 2200 Flowing Springs Road pursuant to an amicable deal deed in lieu of condemnation. Your here motions are...
I'm not sure I understand that.
Yeah, can I explain?
Yeah.
So this is a form of a purchase, a transactional form of purchase, that evades or avoids the need for a transfer tax. It's the township purchasing the property in lieu of condemning it, and not condemning it, but amicably purchasing the property pursuant to agree upon terms with the property owner, and the result of it, again, is to avoid the need for, or the application of a transfer tax, which will either raise the purchase price or impose a transfer tax of about sixteen hundred dollars on the township.
What is this customarily done, Mike? Is that a situation like this?
It's customarily done, a situation like this. Yeah, the resolution's needed just for the recorder of deeds, for their purposes, when they file a statement of value at the, when you go to file the deeds that are transferred.
But I think your question is, is this type of transaction customary? The answer is yes.
I don't think I've heard the purchase price on this document yet, though.
Uh, it's for the appraised value, and I believe the appraised, one sixty?
One sixty?
That's what I understand, one hundred and sixty thousand.
Yep.
That's for both parcels?
No, just for the maintenance building, one, that part.
And closing is scheduled for the first week of March.
But there is two parcels, correct?
Yes.
So the price of one sixty is only one parcel, what's the other parcel?
We're not buying the other parcel. The owner is keeping it, but we're just buying the one parcel.
Oh, I, that's why I asked, I thought that the parcel would actually made about two, I'm correct, okay.
We are buying, the whole, what, we used to be owned by a Bertrand Village LLC, is in fact two parcels, not three, it's just two. We are buying one of the two, and the new LLC, which bought both parcels, is retaining one of the two.
Schoolhouse itself.
Right, just the schoolhouse. A little move, did we, is that a motion, Ken?
Yes.
Okay, a second, a second.
Any comment? All of the favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also, the settlement for that parcel is scheduled for the third of March. I'm not sure what time. Under all business, we have to authorize advertising of the stormwater management ordinance. Under all business, we have to authorize advertisement of the stormwater management ordinance. Do I hear a motion?
Sub move.
Second.
Any comment? Brian?
Is that gonna be posted on the township website somewhere, or is it posted somewhere?
Once it's, once the board authorizes it, it will be posted on the website.
Yeah, so it'll be... Can we go on that?
Yeah, I can go.
Okay. Hear a motion? Authorize advertisement?
Yes, I'll make that motion, so we...
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor? And Kate Namensgaard's here to bring us up to date on the Moldy Motor Studies.
Um, I just wanted to tell you that the consultants have submitted a draft to the task force, and the task force has made amendments on it. And the consultants are making the changes that we suggested. And we hope to have electronic version of that draft to the board next week, and it'll be posted on the website. It'll also be circulated to the various committees, like the EAC, Park and Rec, Sustainability of the Land Commission, for their comments. And we'll be coming back to you guys, the board, April 14th. So, you will, between, and over the course of this next month, we're hoping you'll take a look at it, and we'll circulate the comments from the other committees to you guys during that period of time. And then we'll be looking for your comments on the 14th, around the 14th. That's your supervisors meeting. So, that's, that's it.
Okay. Are there being those new business? Do I hear motion to return?
You do.
Second.
Any comment? All in favor?